All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of December 5th. In accordance with L B eight ninety-eight, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of the business of the Lincoln City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address that you may be representing by such person or group, unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of that individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization, or group, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to an item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Madam Clerk, will you please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for our city council meeting Monday, December 5th, 2022, is our Mayor's Award of Excellence.
Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council. It's so great to be back here once again to share with you some wonderful stories of our city team. And I'm pleased to present today the Mayor's Award of Excellence for September 2022 to eleven members of our Lincoln Parks and Recreation Community Forestry Team. They were nominated by Lincoln Fire and Rescue Battalion Chief Jeremy Gegg in the category of safety for providing crucial assistance to L F R personnel as they responded to an incident this past summer. That response was triggered when a large tree limb broke off and collapsed a chimney through the roof and into the home of a, into the home, a home in South Lincoln. And when L F R first responders determined that the resident, who was home at the time of the collapse, had tragically deceased, and things moved from rescue to recovery, they pivoted to safely recovering the victim. And with that large limb resting precariously on the roof, they needed help. L F R personnel called on the Community Forestry Section to assess the situation. And after arriving on site, Lincoln Parks and Rec Community Operations Forester Lori Gruber determined that the limb would need to be removed to allow L F R to recover the victim and to mitigate risk to those involved in the recovery operation. The team of arborists, many of whom are joining us today, they quickly arrived at the site where they worked swiftly and safely to remove that tree limb. And their professionalism, their strength, and their resolve in response to this tragic incident that's not typically experienced in their day-to-day work was deeply appreciated by all involved. So in his nomination letter, L F R Battalion Chief Gegg wrote, quote, "Without the response of these city arborists, the recovery operation would have been much more difficult and would have posed significantly higher risk to the L F R members engaged in the recovery." And I just want to say, I think this is the first time in recent memory I've seen someone from one department nominate a team of folks from another department at the city. And it just speaks so highly of the kind of camaraderie and appreciation that our city team members have for one another. So I hope you will please join me in congratulating these community forestry team members for their careful and compassionate work. Please, let's give them a round of applause and invite them up. I'd like to invite Chris to come help hand out all of the plaques. And I'll read the names of each person from the team who's being honored today. Okay, we first have Lori Gruber, who I mentioned before, who is our Community Operations Forester. Adam Klingenberg, a Community Outreach Forester. Jeffrey Gruber, an arborist two. Brian Kerpke White, arborist two. Dustin Penner, an arborist one. Adam Smith, arborist one. Carrie Carpenter, arborist one. Okay, Carrie's not here today. Eric Newell, arborist one. Zachary Smizek, arborist one. Joshua Raul, formerly an arborist two, now maintenance repair worker two. And now, Chris is going to, oh, and Zachary Reherak, my apologies, Zachary Reherak, arborist one. And now Chris Myers from Lincoln Parks and Rec is going to share a few words about the team. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. Today's recognition of the Lincoln City Arborists who responded to the call on June 30th is an honor shared by the entire forestry team. The response and care the team took to safely remove the limb that day is indicative of the work that they do and perform every day, safely pruning and removing public trees throughout the community. It's with my great thanks to all of you that you do this work day in and day out, safely caring for Lincoln City, um, urban forest. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I want to just acknowledge that Director Maggie Stuckey-Ross could not be here today. But you might notice a certain former parks director who came down to celebrate his teammates. And I just want to say, Lynn Johnson, thank you for being here to share in this celebration. Let's give Lynn a round of applause. And now I'd like to invite Lori back up to share a few words on behalf of the team that's here today being honored.
Hi, um, thank you. On behalf of all of us, this is quite an honor. It is an honor to serve the city of Lincoln. It is an honor to, and a privilege to be able to help L F R. And wonderful recognition for the guys that I also have the privilege to work with day in and day out. They, they do love what they do. They work hard to get it done for the city and well-deserved recognition on their behalf. So thank you so much. We appreciate it.
I think we might have a few family members of our arborists here today. Can you, if you're a family member, could you raise your hand so we can thank you as well? Let's thank their All right, well, um, thank you again for giving us the time and space to honor our team at Parks and Rec. And we really are grateful to you for your incredible work, day in and day out, and especially in that moment.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations again to all of you. Thank you so much. Thank you. It's photo time, I'll bet. It is exciting. We'll just give it a moment to clear and Yes, that's right. That's right. Okay, when you are ready, Madam Clerk, we will be ready for you.
Next on our city council agenda would be our consent agenda, Sections one and two.
Is there anyone present that would like to testify on Items one or two? Welcome, Mr. McDowell.
Good afternoon, council members. T J McDowell from the mayor's office. It is my pleasure to introduce two nominees for the Commission on Women and Gender. The first up is Guadalupe Escaville, who serves as the Communications and Policy Manager at the Nebraska Civic Engagement Table, a statewide, nonpartisan, nonprofit, focused on building political power for underrepresented Nebraskans to ensure that they are reflected in the policy decisions that impact their lives. Guadalupe is a recent graduate of the University of Nebraska-Lincoln. She is passionate about community outreach, mentorship, and empowerment through involvement in various community groups. And Guadalupe is a very firm believer that compassion and equity belong at the forefront of collaborative work. Guadalupe Escaville.
Welcome. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you so much for having me here. I would love to be a part of the Commission on Women and Gender, primarily because I believe Lincoln is such a rapidly growing and diverse city and being directly immersed in the work to ensure that we make this a safe home for everybody is really important to me. Um, I also believe that intergenerational collaboration is really, really important. So being able to bring all of our perspectives together to ensure that we're able to help people as profoundly as possible is a really big priority of mine.
Very good. Thank you. Are there questions or comments for, for Ms. Escaville? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
And next is my pleasure to introduce Naboy Sean. Originally from South Sudan, she is now a naturalized citizen. She currently serves as a senior case manager at Catholic Social Services. In addition, she's a small business owner. You might want to ask her about that. She gets back to her community in multiple ways. And recently, I had the pleasure of moderating a panel that she was on, and she was a wonderful panelist. Naboy Sean.
Welcome. Tell us about that small business.
Well, um, I, I own a small cleaning business.
Very good.
And I own it through an eco collective who's able to help immigration and women and Orphages women to be able to have their dream to, to come true in the United States.
Fantastic. We're so happy to have you here today. Are there any questions or comments for applicant?
Just a thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, T J. Director Elliott.
Good evening. Elizabeth Elliott, Director of L T U. There's an item, I believe it's one C, it's the street superintendent. This is just certifying first that Tim Byrne was our street superintendent for the year 2022 and that he will continue to do that in the year 2023. Under state statutes, this is an incentive-type program where if you have a Class B superintendent, you get so much. We have a Class A superintendent, so we get all of eighty-five hundred dollars a year for this. But we will take it and, and Tim obviously does a wonderful job and will continue to serve in that capacity. So, any questions?
Questions for Director Elliott? Comments? All right. Thank you for that explanation and the clarity.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thanks for being here. All right, anyone else present on Items one and two? Anyone else present? Okay, very good. Madam Clerk, could you please move us on?
We cannot vote on these items. Item one A is appointing Guadalupe Escaville to the Commission on Women and Gender for a term to expire November twenty-first, 2025, introduced by Beckius.
So moved?
Second?
Seconded by Raybold. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item one B is appointing Naboy Chan to the Commission on Women and Gender for a term to expire November twenty-first, 2025, introduced by Beckius.
So moved?
Second?
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item one C is approving the certification of the street superintendent for a term from January first, 2022, through December thirty-first, 2022, introduced by Beckius.
So moved?
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item one D is approving the distribution of funds representing interest earnings on short-term investments of idle funds during the month ended September thirtieth, 2022, introduced by Bowers.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded by McGinnis. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item one E is resolution leaving the assessments approved by the city council sitting as the Board of Equalization on November twenty-first, 2022, and setting the interest rate on those assessments for the cost of the improvements in the Downtown Management Business Improvement District, Downtown Core Management Business Improvement District, Downtown Maintenance District, and the West Hay Market Downtown Maintenance District, introduced by Bowers.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Show?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Items two A through two E, introduced by Show.
So moved?
Second?
Seconded by Raybold. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. That concludes our consent agenda. We shall now move on to Section four, Public Hearing Resolutions. Item four A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for November first through November fifteenth, 2022.
Is there anyone present that would like to testify on item four A? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dornell Isom, and I am a resident of Lincoln, Nebraska. I live on fifty-twenty Leighton Avenue. And as of November first, at eight-thirty in the evening, I turned off of fifty-six and Sherman. And there's supposed to be construction going on down there. And there was two barricades, but they wasn't closed in. It was open so that you can travel through the street. And as I turned through that, I, uh, actually, it was basically almost too late. I was up on the mound of gravel dirt that the construction crew had sitting on the side of the street. And boy, that really just shook me. I didn't see it. The lighting off the street didn't give any good lighting. And I took pictures of it in a video. And the mound of gravel and dirt was not taped off or coned off with any type of reflector around it. And I am here today to ask to be reimbursed for that for my car sitting at Spideale right now. And my front left tire has came off. And just, it's a mess right now. And I just got the car through my bank. And I pay a pretty, pretty pity for it. And as you see, I work at, work at Mapes Industries. I've been there for about two years. And just would like a little reimbursement on this. So I don't know. That's about all what I have to say on that, so.
Thank you for being here. Are there questions for our applicant present today? What's the amount of your claim, sir?
The amount of the claim was thirty-seven hundred.
Okay.
And some change, but I'm asking to be reimbursed for fifty-five hundred.
Okay.
Since there's a little, there's probably going to be a little bit more damage once the car is raised up and they get to working on it, so.
Okay. Yes, Councilwoman Raybold.
Uh, Mr. Isom, do you have insurance?
Yes.
And will the insurance cover part of this, or?
Oh, I haven't, haven't talked to my insurance yet, so.
Okay.
They wanted to know what was going to happen after this, so. But yes, I do, I am covered.
Okay.
Bumper to bumper.
And, and what is your deductible?
My deductible?
On the insurance?
On the insurance? Uh, you know what? I quite didn't, I didn't bring that paperwork with me. I didn't think I was going to need it, so.
Are there questions for Mr. Isom? Councilwoman Ras, uh, Washington?
Mr. Isom, uh, thank you for coming down. Can you, uh, would you tell us again, what time were you driving? And then what did the barricades look like? Were they?
They was, they was the big, they was the big barricades, but they wasn't closed in, so the traffic couldn't get through the street.
And was there any other signage saying local traffic?
There was no signs, there was no tape around the mound of dirt or gravel or any type of cones with reflectors around it to let you know that it's sitting there. And this was at eight-thirty in the evening, so.
Are there any other questions or comments, or anyone you'd like to hear from? Staff or, yes, legal counsel or L T U?
L T U, please.
Okay, Director Elliott, would you mind coming to up front, please? Thank you. Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Director Elliott, um, these situations always give us an opportunity to learn more about how L T U does their business. But if you could please sort of lay out what the construction project is in this area, when it began, how you, you know, made the neighbors know, or how did, how did drivers know that it's a construction site? Just give us the background.
Absolutely. This was a residential rehab project being conducted through one of our contractors. And as part of that, this, as Mr. Isom said, there were, uh, on each end of the street, there were type, not that this will probably make any sense, but type three barricades. They're the big, large ones on two legs, and you've got the, the two or three boards here. There was also on each end of those, um, road closed sign. And so that would have been, had you just turned onto that road, and if you had driven around those, you would have passed the road closed sign as well as had to squeeze between the road barricades. On those, we do try to keep, uh, the ability to have, be able to drive through them because every morning and evening, the contractors are in and out of there. And so there is enough room for a vehicle to get passed through there. As part of our, uh, all of our residential rehabs or any rehab, we do notify those who live in the neighborhood, uh, the construction, the timelines and all of that. So our normal notice went out to everyone who lived on that street. And, um, because the roads closed, this was an active construction site. And so they, the contractors typically put up these barricades thinking, road's closed, no one's going to be traveling through there. On any given day, it could be material, such as this very large pile of rocks or gravel, but it could also be equipment. It could be trailers, those types of things on any given day. And because they're not expecting people to be traversing that street because the road was closed, that's their construction zone and everything, um, other than the road barricades, there's not a whole lot of, um, additional markings or things like that that are provided in the middle of the construction zone. Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Elliott? At all? Mr. Isom, do you have any closing comments you would like to provide for us?
No, I pretty much said what I had to say.
All right. All right. Well, we, well, how this will work, well, um, we will vote on the whole claims report. And unless a council member moves, makes a motion to remove your item, then that means your claim would be removed. Otherwise, it will not be removed.
Okay.
So, but we can explain that to you as we move on.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for being here. All right, Madam Clerk, can you please move? Is there anyone else that would like to speak on item four A?
I do.
Okay. Please come on down.
Want to start talking now? Wait till I get up there?
It's all right, you can wait, Ms. Pope Gonzalez, till you can get to a microphone if you'd like.
I don't need a microphone. Husband had a stroke, so make sure you guys understand that. What'd you do with my claim about the dog? Find it yet? Because I understand Gambino Stables Working Canines has a two-hundred-dollar-a-day late charge. Bear Edge Trucking Baby Brother has a fifty-dollar-a-day late charge. We're going into two years of this, right, Jane Raybold? You allowed my dog to get hurt. Now, the claim was filed. How come the city didn't get it? What's the problem with the city? Came a certified, notarized mail. Now, Councilwoman, is that right, called you? Sandra, Washington, checked, never came. Isn't that funny? Hmm. The vet bill is fifty-five hundred dollars. Jody Jones is my vet, the personal vet to Sir Al Capone. Google him, okay? He can smell explosives, can you guys? So I don't think you're as important as he is. Now, this one over here voted in twenty-fifteen to let the rat bastard, excuse the language, get close to my house. More than seven feet. It wasn't enough that it was fifty feet. Now, hmm, anybody take care of that claim? Because guess what? Now it's going to be a lawsuit, right? Now, isn't it something that employees for a county, city, state, federal government think the money is theirs? In the first place, why should that man's insurance have to cover the cost? Did he receive the notice? How do you know? Half the times I don't receive. We, we can't cuss. My uncle Kermit said he does not like his niece Terry Ray. My name is Terry Ray, one word. But I guess none of you did your homework, did you? Now, how come the dog was allowed to get hurt? What, because he's four-legged? He has an Instagram. How can he have an Instagram? He doesn't clean up his own poop. Now, I've been viral on the internet because of you people, right? December twenty-nineteen. Is it twenty-nineteen? What's the date? No, it's twenty-fifteen, December twenty-fifteen. Huh. Ain't that something? Because of your people. Thomas, who was with the, he's not there now. He's wastewater. Oh, that's right, it's not wastewater anymore. It's L T U. And how come Mickey Esposito is being charged and getting federal indictments in California? Maybe you guys need to do your homework. Now, hmm. Now, what happened to that claim? Where's it at? I should have hand-delivered it, right? And then what? So when you deny it, I can take you to court, right? Now, somebody needs to say something because I'm going to stand here, and I'll keep talking. I did promise the sheriff's deputy I wouldn't incite a riot. So what happened? What happened to the claims? Anybody check? Why didn't you check? Aren't you my city councilperson? Why didn't you check? Now, who is, who is Year-at-Large?
Yes. Yes.
Your at-large?
Yes, ma'am.
Your at-large. Right? I just have a large butt, but, okay? No, if you're at-large, and you're at-large, you three should have been to my house. Been to my house lately? Yes, no? Yes, no? You're at, at-large. You want reelected? You been to my house?
I have not.
I know, you have? Yes, you have, I've seen. I've seen you be by. Don't even go there. Like, you don't think I know who comes up and down? Listen, the Gonzalez family has been there since the eighteen hundreds. I have video. Mm-hmm. You know where it says smile, you're on camera? Never a police department controls the camera. So yes, you've been by. Now, have you been by?
I've been by.
Yes, you have, okay? Now, I'm not gonna write my stuff here, because you guys know me, okay? Now, I'm not in the very best moods. So what happens when I'm not in a good mood? I don't stand up here all night. Ain't that something? Now, am I coming as Gambino Stables Working Canines? Or am I coming as Terry Pope Gonzalez, founder of the South Salt Creek Area Neighborhood Association in twenty-ten? Or am I coming as the homestead owner of the Gonzalez Homestead? Now, I don't care if you guys say anything.
One minute.
That's what, 'cause what happens? We viral on the internet. Ain't that something? Oh, thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else present that would like to speak on item four A? New impending claims. Item four A. All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you, uh, please call the next item?
Item four B is approving the interlocal agreement between the City of Lincoln and the County of Lancaster to expand coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds to certain nonprofit tourism organizations.
Welcome.
Hi, councilmembers. My name is Grace Willnard, I'm with the City of Lincoln. I'm the ARPA Compliance Administrator. Um, this fall, the city and county worked together on the Tourism Support Grant. We have awarded fifteen nonprofit tourism locations, um, with this grant totaling four-point-nine million dollars. Uh, the county felt that they needed this interlocal agreement in order to make those payments, and so that's why this is being brought to you today. Uh, the city has already made the payments to all of the, to all of the applicants, or to all of the awardees, so this is sort of a prefunctory, but, uh, the county felt like they needed it. But I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for Grace? That was quite an oppressive list, actually.
Oh, yeah. It's a, it is a lot of money.
It is a lot of money and great causes, so.
Yes.
All right. Seeing none, thank you very much. All right, Madam Clerk, we are ready.
That concludes Section Four of Public Hearing Resolutions. We can now vote on these items. Item four A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for November first through November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, introduced by Beckyus.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Showb. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Showb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven-zero. Item four B is approving the interlocal agreement between the City of Lincoln and the County of Lancaster to expand coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds to certain nonprofit tourism organizations, introduced by Beckyus.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven-zero. That concludes Section Four of our agenda. We shall now move on to Section Five, Public Hearing Ordances, Second Reading and Related Resolutions. Item five A, text amendment two-two-zero-zero-eight, request of the City of Lincoln Planning Department to amend Lincoln Municipal Code, Section two-seven-point-six-three-point-zero-seven-five, Academies, Private Schools, Community Colleges, Colleges, or Other Post-Secondary Education Facilities, and Section two-point-six-three-point-zero-eight-zero, Healthcare Facilities, Non-Residential, to allow Planning Commission to adjust the height requirement of a district to provide flexibility and placement of buildings provided there is no significant adverse effect on existing or reasonably anticipated future uses in the surrounding area, and repealing Sections two-seven-point-six-three-point-zero-seven-five and two-seven-point-six-three-point-zero-eight-zero as heretofu existing.
Director Carey?
Good afternoon, David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, five-five-five, South Tenth Street. Here before you, um, as the applicant of this text amendment to our zoning code, um, to address, uh, kind of a, more of a loophole, almost, that's existing in our code, which doesn't allow for, uh, a more straightforward way to increase the heights of proposed projects in some of our special, uh, permit districts. This is a, this addresses, um, a situation where we became aware of it when we had an inquiry coming from Union College for a potential new project, new building, that's higher than the underlying zoning district height allowed. Um, and so what we're proposing here are these changes to the, uh, non-residential healthcare facilities, and for academies, private schools, community colleges, and other post-secondary education facilities, to allow for the planning commission, these are final action items, special permits at the planning commission unless appealed. So we're setting this up so that these changes and adjustments, when there is limited or no adverse effect to the surrounding area, um, to make this type of change to the height allowed, uh, at the time of action at the planning commission. So, really, this is meant to allow for some more flexibility for good, positive projects that come forward for these types of uses. Um, and I can answer any questions. I would just add that the planning commission did recommend this, nine-zero, off of their consent agenda.
Questions for Director Carey? Councilwoman Washington?
Director Carey, I have one question. Who determines no adverse effects, and how is that determination made?
So through an application process, we, the staff, would look at it. Um, there often are, uh, and usually are, actually, um, interactions and communications with the surrounding neighborhood, whenever there's a project that happens. Um, usually the applicant will hold those meetings as well. Um, and so we will, um, kind of set the, the barometer on that, and then, uh, it's usually pretty clear, uh, if there is some opposition or not. Doesn't mean that we wouldn't go ahead and recommend approval still, um, but through the process, we would get a gauge on kind of how, where we're at with the adverse effect. Typically, what we take into account is how high is the, is the increase in height for the project compared to what's allowed, as well as how far away from other districts w- is the project. On a campus setting, which is most of what these would be, it usually is not an issue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Carey? Comments? Good? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Anyone else present that would like to speak on item five A? All right. Anyone else seeing none? We can move on.
I'll be calling item five B, Change Zone two-two-zero-three-two, Application of Alexander Company for a change of P Public Use District to P Public Use District with Landmark Overlay on zoning designation property generally located at four-forty South Eighth Street.
David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, five-five-five, South Tenth Street, here, really on behalf of the applicant, um, just here as the, uh, kind of representing, we all are representing the owner of this property. Um, this is a public property, uh, the, the K Street Power Plan across the street. This is a, a location that has had, um, long-term interest to, for some type of redevelopment. It's identified in our downtown master plan, as well as the South Hay Market Neighborhood Plan, um, as being an area of opportunity. Um, and then there, so there is interest in this property, um, to do some housing, and ideally, uh, and maybe likely, some affordable housing as well. The reason why we're here today is that there has been some conversations about the, the desirability to identify this property as, uh, a landmark historic district, uh, that brings with it some specific, um, rules to make sure that the integrity of the historic structure is maintained throughout the possibility of a redevelopment. Um, and so, uh, the good news here is that, uh, there is private sector interest in redeveloping it, along with the fact that the historic preservation of the structure should be part of the, any type of redevelopment. So there's an understanding with that. This designation, uh, potentially will help, um, with some financing of that redevelopment to happen as well. So there's, there's a, there's a reasoning behind this as well. I am here on behalf of the Planning Department to say that we are in support of this. The Planning Commission also voted nine-zero, um, to support this, and this was on their consent agenda. I can answer any questions you might have.
Councilman Beckyus?
Uh, uh, Director Carey, um, what happens if the applicant, um, decides for one reason or another that this project is not feasible for them? Does the landmark designation remain?
The landmark designation would remain, and that is a big reason why I'm here to say that we're in support of this, is that there is a logical reason to actually approve this and to put it in place, so that the, the rules that would govern any project that would come forward would still be in place, to say, we're gonna maintain the integrity of, say, the exterior of the building, so it looks similar to where, what it looks like now. It's an opportunity for me to answer that as well, in a different way, which is, there will still be a process for surplusing the property, um, so there is no guarantee that the applicant is going to be the redeveloper. I can't stand here and say that's going to happen. Um, it may happen. But the, the action that we are asking you to take to put these designation, this designation on this property would stay in place moving forward, regardless of who might redevelop it. Great. Thank you.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yeah, um, so, Director Carey, you said the applicant has no rights to this facility at this point? There's no purchase agreement, nothing on the table that we've agreed to with this applicant?
Correct.
Okay. And so we wanna go ahead and encumber this property ahead of time? Before we know who would wanna use it, or how they would wanna use it? If somebody wanted to come along, and we don't know what the highest and best use is, it usually is, uh, up to the buyer. Um, but if somebody wanted to come along and create a, a lab, and have a high-tech lab in there, and have to punch some windows, or do something else, they wouldn't be able to do this. So we aren't really opening this up to the public. I mean, it, it's gonna be a single use, is the way we look at it?
So, well, I, I, I don't think that's quite what, what is happening here. I think, first of all, there would be a process, a review process, to go through to see if what, whatever proposal comes through. So you mentioned punching some windows through, or, or some new openings. That, that certainly is a possibility, sir, that still, depending on where those would be located with a project, maybe they're necessary to do, do some upgrades to the structure. Um, so, but there would still be a review process, even with this landmark designation in place. Um, so in a general sense, there's, it doesn't mean you can't do certain things, it means you, you, there'd be a review process to make sure that the integrity, and there's a, there's a range of what that means for any type of building like this. So it really doesn't close off the possibilities. Um, the other thing I would say is that, um, I stand here as a representative of the Planning Department and as of the city, that this is a, is a net positive, that it, we should be looking at maintaining the historic integrity of this structure. And so whether that encumbers an applicant or not, I think that it's a, there's a value to the city to make sure that that structure, when redeveloped, maintains some of its historic value. So that, that is part of what we're asking you to take action on, ultimately. So it is up to you to make that determination, but that is the recommendation that we are providing.
Councilman Hill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Carey, thanks for coming forward. I'm gonna belabor that just a little bit more. A few months ago, someone came forward with a development agreement for the Golds Building. And there was a conversation about modifying the building and historic designation, and I think we're tearing it down now because it couldn't, or, I don't understand, please help me understand, how the similarities and the differences between those two projects?
So, the, the Golds example, um, Golds Building has historic value. There was a process that was taken to have a discussion, several discussions, actually, before the decision was fully made to, to go ahead with the, the demolition of a portion of that.
A portion, yes.
Um, so, part of that discussion was, that step was, ended up being deemed necessary in order to make sure that the other portion that had some higher value of historic, you know, nature, to make sure that that, that was maintained as best as possible, and then it still allowed redevelopment to happen. So that's more, every situation is a little bit different.
Okay.
That's a good example, though, of that there is a process to go through to make sure that we are considering the different options, whatever would come forward for redevelopment, and then we would take that into consideration and take it seriously, and ultimately to try to maintain the historic integrity of a structure like the K Street Power Plan.
Well, hypothetically, we could designate this historic, a developer could come along and say, I wanna do something with it, and you could say, ooh, that's a better plan? We are going to ignore this historic designation? Is that a possibility, or hypotheti-
Try to, try, try away from saying ignore it, but, um, the, I think, I think what you're saying is that there is a process to be taken to make those decisions, and that we would still follow that process. So, um, I mean, there's always, there's even the opportunity to, to change the designation as well, ultimately, if we, if that was deemed necessary. But that's not really what we're trying to focus on, we're trying to focus on the fact that there is historic value to the structure, and we wanna say, if and when it's redeveloped, that it should be retained to some level.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman McGinnis?
Is this applicant in a hurry to have this designation put on? Is there a timing issue with this, or?
I can't speak to that standing here. I, I do think that there is interest in having the designation put in place, so that some potential tax credits can be administered for a potential project.
Could we put that in? When someone goes under contract, could they say, that's one of the conditions of closing, that the city must have it as a historic tax credit at that time? Or historically preserved at that time? I'm, I'm just worried about putting the designation on it that will hinder the value or hinder the use. We're basically not allowing it to be an open market for-
Well, I, I mean, it, to be clear, I don't think the use is being determined with this action. I think the, that the landmark designation is being determined.
Is there a reason we're in a hurry? I mean, can we put this on pending until we know who's gonna buy it?
Uh, I don't, I, I don't think, I don't think that step is necessary, because I think we're saying that this designation as landmark is, is what we would do regardless of who, what the project would be.
And if there's people out there wanting to buy it, but they don't want the, the designation, they wouldn't be buying it. So they've come off the market. We're loo- making our market for this building a lot smaller.
I think if there was that strong of interest that they're in the process of surplus, they certainly could voice that, if they really wanted to do something different.
But they have to do it by next three minutes, because we'll be voting to move this forward.
Come forward. Come forward.
Not voting today, all right?
Councilwoman Washington?
Uh, Director Carey, um, thank you for bringing this, this conversation, um, to us. I have a, a question about, uh, the process of landmarking something here in the City of Lincoln. So, um, I'm very familiar with the process once it hits the National Park Service Desk. But what's the, and, and I also appreciate and, and oftentimes find myself an advocate for historic preservation. So I, I see the value in communities, um, saying out loud, this structure is important to us, the history of this structure speaks to something we care about. So, but my question to you is, what is the process the city goes through to determine which structures have the, have a historic value that they want to celebrate?
Certainly. So the landmark designation actually brings with it some amount, depending on the property, some amount of guidelines that would tell you what, what to do to best preserve the historic value of it. That work, generally speaking, is done by planning staff. And then we have brought this and we would, we do others, part of the processes, we bring this to the Historic Preservation Commission. They, they reviewed this in October. They, they provided feedback and said that they support this. And so once that step happens, then we bring it to Planning Commission and it comes back, comes to the City Council. So this is, this is the process of doing it.
So the process of looking at the structures we have in Lincoln and, and saying, "We should look at the historic value of something," starts at the planning department?
Well, it often comes with an applicant that comes in and wants to do something or they might want to, it, it could be anyone really that, that says, "We are interested in this historic history of this property." And we would do that background research. Or we might already have it and we might proceed with that from there.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Carey?
And I, I'm going to allow, not allow, but say that there, there might be some other answers here.
Sure, that's, well, we appreciate your responses and your comments, Director Carey. Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Adam Winkler with the Alexander Company from Madison, Wisconsin, 2450 Rimrock Road, Suite 100 Madison. And I'm here in favor of the project, of course. And I really didn't have any remarks set, but I was here to answer questions. I know that one question is, "What's the hurry to get this done?" And I'm not sure if any of you know, but the state historic tax credit is sunsetting at the end of this year. So we've worked with a consultant on getting in line for that state historic preservation credit. And we actually, last week, filed the Part II with the state. So a $1 million reservation hat, of credit has been made. So that's probably about 800, a little over $800,000 of equity value to the project. So yes, the credits expire at the end of this year. We need a historic designation on the project in order to get that. It's going to be either the landmarks designation through the city or the National Park Services, National Register of Historic Places. And that would be a lot more of, you know, there's more that comes with that, I think, than just your local landmark designation.
That's very helpful, I think, to know. Yes, Councilwoman Ray Bold.
Could you tell us a little bit more, what are some of the strings that come with that designation if you want to qualify for that million-dollar tax credit?
I, I don't believe there's any real strings. It's just that we need that in order to get the tax credit. So we do have to, we have to develop the project according to the National Park Services standards of historic rehabilitation, which we would do anyways. We are, if we were to do this project, if we were selected, we would do federal tax credits as well. So we'd have to follow all the rules that, that come with the federal tax credit, which there are a lot of, you know, with the windows and facades and many of the interior items. I'd also like to say that if we did the project, we would most likely do an affordable project, roughly 70 units would be the plan through the LI-Tech program.
I can add to that answer is that the landmark designation locally does bring with it preservation guidelines that have been spelled out as part of this application. So they're, they're kind of what, what you would expect when you, when you do a landmark, when a project comes forward and trying to preserve the integrity of the structure.
Other questions? Yes, Councilman McGinnis?
Question for you. Since this hasn't even been declared surplus or it hasn't been put on the market at all, so you would apply, you would get these credits for this building? It wouldn't go to with the building. It would just go to you.
My understanding is it goes with the building.
Okay. So whoever else could come along, bid, and then take these credits?
We're absolutely at risk on doing this. We do not have the project and it would go with the property.
Hmm, okay. That's opposite of what I thought it would be.
Interesting, okay. Other questions for our applicant or Director Carey? All right, very interesting, okay.
Thank you very much.
Seeing none, thank you, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else present that would like to speak on this issue?
Terry Pope Gonzalez, founder, South Salt Creek Area Neighborhood Association. At least he didn't say it was crucial. It's crucial, it's crucial. In a nutshell, if we had crayons, a landmark project happens for what? Money. That's why you're a man after my own heart, aren't you? You too, right? Because your park's a wreck. My daddy ran Stapleton International Airport, Denver, Colorado. Born 1928, dead 2013. In order for you to have federal funding, federal funding, you understand what federal funding means? County funding, state, oh, here, let's do it correctly. Federal funding, state funding, county funding, city funding, oh, nonprofit, oh! And this one here, Tom Beckus, Councilman? I appreciate that you know what the word crucial means. It means you want your first responders. You don't need another building with a landmark. Go down South First Street, 349 South First Street. When you come off of Westo, right there on the sign, right here, it says landmark, historic neighborhood, right? South Salt Creek Community Organization. Go look at that neighborhood. Hmm, go look how bad that neighborhood is. It was pristine condition when I got here. Hmm, oh, you know, there's a trustee sale tomorrow. Really? Somebody think they're going to get my property? Hmm, ain't that something? See, I'm sick and tired of being discriminated against. I am first and ale. They are fourth and eighth. Huh, count on your fingers, how close are they to me? But at least he didn't get up here and say, "It's crucial. He's just got to have it, it's crucial." Really? The reason they bought landmark and actually how it works, okay? Then they bring somebody in and it's a subcontractor with another name so they can get the property. How come? Because who are they? Alexander Company, right? Are they Lincoln, Nebraska? Are they local? Ask Roger and Yance. I'll bet you he could tell you if they're local or not. Now, we support local. How come? Hmm? How come? Because we all live here. Does he live here? Probably not. Do the people tearing down Gold's Building, do they live here? Probably not. My father-in-law, born in 1922, built the Gold's Building. Hmm, and he's dead. Twenty, what? No, 2009, killed because of that concrete company. Why is there a concrete company 50 feet from my home? It's going to be, how close to them? Hmm? Then they are in a landmark, historic landmark area. Wow, who got the money? I don't care if they're called Nebco Incorporated now, I don't care. Nobody gets my property and I don't care who wants it. I don't give a good goddamn who wants it. Excuse the language, my Uncle Kermit would be upset, okay? Uncle Kermit was born in 1937. So when you do a landmark, okay? So you guys think about what you're doing because you really messed up. Jeff Fortenberry messed up, didn't he? He was on the Lincoln City Council in 2000. I didn't know until Cindy Lamb wanted reelected. I guess I should pay better attention, right? See, when I vote for somebody, just so you guys understand, I didn't vote for any of you. You didn't come to my house and ask me. How many votes do I control? Do you guys got any idea? I think I'm up to 25,000. Ain't that something? Hmm, I'm going to have to go for mayor. Hell, I'll fire you all because all I got to do is have Scott Parker back there at Google. Hmm. Now, you guys do whatever you're going to do because you already know you're going to. But when you do that landmark, you make sure it's not in your backyard because the day it comes in your backyard, you pay attention because the hell that we've been through is getting ready to come down on you. Now, how much more time I got?
21 seconds.
Oh, hey!
A minute, 21 seconds.
Now, I don't feel well, do I? No. And guess what? I have tumors in my feet where all my neighbors have tumors in their head. Now, my Uncle Kermit, I said, "My mind is sharp." He said, "Your tongue is sharper." Now, he named me Terry Ray. So here's what he says. "My cousin Karen ought not to fight with Terry Ray."
Anyone else present that would like to speak on this item? Anyone else present on this item? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please move us on?
I'll be calling Items 5C, 5D, and 5E together. Item 5C is approving the 10th and O Apartments Redevelopment Project Redevelopment Agreement between the city and 1030 O Apartments LLC relating to the redevelopment of property generally located at 1030 O Street. And the related fiscal year '22, '23 CIP to authorize and appropriate $3,750,000 in funds for the 10th and O Apartments Redevelopment Project and $250,000 upon receipt of the City of Lincoln Affordable Housing Project. And the related issuance of tax allocation bonds for the 10th and O Apartments Redevelopment Project in the amount not to exceed $3,750,000 in tax increment financing.
I think I'm on here. Good afternoon, Dan Marvin, Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. I really want to just confine my comments to parking, to the alley, to the streetscape, to a motion to amend that we discussed a little bit earlier and then the in lieu of that's related to this particular project. The hatched area is the area that is the plan area for this project. It goes to the middle of O Street. You can see the sidewalk in front of the building. And just so we know, this is the old Coole's Restaurant we used to all go and eat at from time to time. There's, there's siding on the exterior of the building. I think, I don't want to, I don't want to disparage Coole's, but the exterior was not that cool. It was not that cool. And I think it will, it will look cooler in the future with this project. But there's a couple of alleys here. A lot of people are not really familiar with the north-south alley that runs from O Street North. And then there's an alley in the back of the building. This is kind of the proposed future look. This is a project that was before you earlier. It's the Lincoln Electric System Home Office that was sold. It's condos above and the building next door is what is before you. The reason I want to talk a little bit about the LES Building is when we were before you with the LES project, there were some streetscape and alley dollars that were associated with that. And so what we're trying to do is to coordinate the alley work and the streetscape work that is, that comes from LES with this project. There's some timing issues with all that, but I think that's created some challenges, but great opportunity to be able to completely finish off the back of the alley here and do the streetscape from this half-block around the corner. And as this body's well aware, we're doing a large streetscape project for the downtown which will also incorporate design elements that we can use for uniform design through this area. This has been before urban design. It's been reviewed by urban design. The project has been moved forward. I think they've got unanimous approval for this particular schematic design that, that's before you. The parking in the building, I think, is worth noting. A lot of people that do projects in the downtown, and we're happy because we, we have available parking in some of our garages, but most of the projects that develop in the downtown do not build their own parking. They negotiate in the redevelopment agreement parking stalls. This particular project will have parking on-site. Parking is not a TIF-eligible element because we'd have to all be able to allow the public to be able to park. So those aspects of the parking have to be paid for with the private project. But I think just, we all have to recognize that prior to 2019, there were not available monthly parking stalls in the downtown. We were completely, you know, at capacity and so, and I, and we hope to be able to get back to that at some point in the future. But we need to recognize that developers like this that are expending, you know, their dollars to help build parking is a public asset, asset for us because those are monthly parkers that are not going to be providing in our own parking garages as well. The motion to amend, here is what is in your packet and the dollar amount that was up here as far as the estimated new assessed value is, was wrong. And so that's what you'll be seeing as a change in a motion to amend on the top half of this to adjust for an error that's in the packet. And that will be a motion to amend for next week's hearing. Don't need to make that today. The last thing I'll mention, and then I know that the developer Brett West is here and his attorney, Danae Kalkowski, is that this project will not have affordable housing units in it, but they are making an in lieu of payment of a quarter of $90 to an affordable housing fund that will provide affordable housing elsewhere within the city. And I'll stop there and open it up for any questions.
Questions for Director Marvin? Any questions, comments? All right. Thank you, Dan, very much. Oh, sorry. Councilman McGinnis?
There'll be a separate redevelopment agreement coming forward at a later date?
This is the redevelopment agreement. This is it. And the bond ordinance is, so that's the three different lines.
Okay. How much is going to be going to the O Street TIF project?
So there's three, let me pull that up here.
Sorry, I should have looked it up.
No, that's fine. So the, the elements that we see is, and that's why we're trying to coordinate the money that came from the LES project along with the dollars that come from this, which is $250,000 that goes towards alley improvements and streetscape improvements in front of their building.
Councilwoman Washington?
Mr. Marvin, if you'd put that back on the screen.
Sure, sure.
I'm just trying to, I know the math, there is a math error and so we're, you're correcting that.
Well, this is the corrected one.
This is the correct version.
Yep.
And so what we have in front of us in these areas, lines, city public improvements, and right-of-way, those have stayed the same, yes?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes. The only numbers that change are the numbers up on the top.
Okay.
Other questions? Yes, I'm sorry.
Would you tell us a little bit about the parking in the building?
I might leave that to Brett.
Then I will, I'll hold the question.
But what, I do know, one of the reasons we all have an incentive in trying to improve alleys, that particular alley that runs east and west is not in the greatest shape, I think would be the way to do it. But when you tear a building down, you get, you tear down a lot of other stuff too. You don't normally stop right at the property line. But they will be taking access into their building from the, from the back end through that alley. And 60 stalls is a, you know, is a significant investment.
Other questions? Good, all right. Thank you, Director Marvin. Welcome, who next, developer? Brett, would you, Mr. West, would you like to come forward?
Sure. Can I have my computer if we have any other questions? Brett West, on behalf of U.S. Properties, so Monte Frelick is the current owner and will remain the owner long-term, just helping him out. Yeah, we've pretty excited about this property. It's obviously needs some TLC. We looked at another number of different options over the years, including keeping the existing buildings. It's not viable to keep those. They've kind of outlived their useful life. So this property is going to be turned into 70 apartment units for the continuing to attract and retain downtown talent, young professionals, hopefully. So that's our goal with this property. And our plan is to use the basements that are under these buildings as a pre-excavated opportunity to put parking in the lower level. We're going to do as many as we possibly can. That's what I can promise. Right now, we think we can get 60 in there, but there's a lot. Once we start demoing this and understanding what's in the ground, we'll see how many we can do. But that, that's our goal, is as many as possible with the lower level as well as on the first floor, there will be parking. But all along the O Street facade will be what you traditionally think is the front door of an apartment complex. So we'll have a fitness, we'll have a business center, we'll have our leasing people working there. So we think the O Street facade will be quite active and we're excited to bring the project forward. So here to answer any questions.
Any questions for Brett at all? It is exciting. Oh, sorry, Councilwoman Shob.
No, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. West, thanks for coming forward. I'm looking at the image of the siding on my Google Maps now. And you had an order surrendering, but I don't remember reading or anyone saying how tall we're going.
We are going to the same height as the LES Building, I'd have to think. I think it's right around 70, 75 feet.
Basically three stories?
Nope, there is, one, two, three, six full stories. So five stories above one story of parking and then a basement, yeah.
Thank you, that was my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, thank you. Any others? Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. West, as a requirement of TIF, you're being, you are making a $250,000 contribution to the city's Affordable Housing Fund.
Yep.
As other developers have said to me, and I just wanted to see if this was your point of view as well, you're entering that, that cost into your pro forma as a development cost as, as any other, as that cost is not TIF reimbursable, so it's just another cost to you. I'm assuming that's in you, it's, I'm assuming it's increasing the cost total of your units, it's increasing the rent total. And you said that this project specifically, you were hoping to attract young professionals, some of our best and brightest that we want to retain here in Lincoln, but we're making their rent more expensive in essence. Is that correct?
Yes. I, I think this is a bigger conversation and those who know me well, including Dan, that's a larger conversation and the whole, I am pro-development and I think this is a good project in a much-needed area that can attract and retain people to our downtown area. And so in this project, we're willing to put that contribution forward. I have some ideas on how we might utilize that to make Lincoln stronger and, and take care of some of the other issues we have, which is affordable housing. And I'm an owner of 100 affordable housing units in this downtown and near downtown. So I can speak from what it takes to redevelop 70 units at 18th and K and keep them affordable for those that need that in our community. This, the target market, is to continue to grow the need that in our community. This, the target market, is to continue to grow the other part. We need housing of all sorts. And I think higher-end housing at this location is a great fit. We're going to put in extra dollars for all, for those parking stalls in the basement. So we can attract those folks who want that kind of living environment. So it is a burden to the project, but it's part of doing business as we understand in Lincoln right now. But I'd be happy to take that offline with any and all members of council and friends and family of continued development in Lincoln.
Is that okay, Dan?
Here, here.
Running for politics, I guess, now. I don't know. I'm not doing that, by the way. No chance. I appreciate all you do. Any other questions about anything else, TIF or otherwise?
Any other questions from Mr. West? It's very exciting. Yes, thank you. Thanks very much.
Please, Brett.
Anyone else present to... Okay?
Terry Pope Gonzalez, founder, 2010, South Salt Creek area neighborhood association. Reason I founded it, wanted to find out just exactly what the monkey business was in Lincoln, Nebraska. Now, affordable house, affordable housing means a Section 8 housing. It also means HUD funding. Hmm. So I understand it's crucial. We just got to do this as crucial. Where are you going to put prostitutes? How about meth head on every corner, meth lab in every neighborhood, right? I'm First and L. They're the Gold's Building, right? My husband built this garage over here. Piedmont Construction, Local 21. Do you understand what Local 21 means? I don't think you do. They didn't have TIF when they built that. Now, can you imagine Caldwell Ellis, Piedmont Construction? Caldwell Ellis is Terry Caldwell and Harold Ellis. They didn't get TIF when they built the church over here by the, by the strip club. You just got to deal with me. Strip club was a parking, now the church, right? Okay. So figure it out. Now, my husband put in all the iron for the children's museum by himself. Isn't that something? This, so what are they going to do with the prostitutes? Hmm? Did the People's City Mission, they're not gone yet. What are they going to do with them? Hmm? Now, they're on every corner. A meth head on every corner, a meth lab in every neighborhood. Now, the Gold's Building, there was, the Terminal Building, what, the Gold's Building? Which way am I? This way. A suspicious fire. Hmm. The LES Par Properties? A suspicious fire in Kohls Restaurants. K-H-U-L-S. So I used to work for Alliant Communications as in LTNT, as in Lincoln Telephone. No, Lincoln Telephone and Telegraph. LTNT, I was Alliant Communications before it became Alltail Communications, before it became Windstream Communications, and then Verizon. Hmm. So guys know how to communicate, right? So here, what are you going to do with your TIF payments? Are you going to give one to each prostitute and, and relocate him someplace else? Where do you live? Let's put him by him, right? Where the, the Indian things are? Maybe the prostitute, see, uh-uh. I'm not going to go there because guess what? That's a sacred area. But a developer wants it. So if you're a developer, you somebody, you don't mean squat to me. Now, let's see. Now, how much TIF they're going to get? Millions of dollars, right? But they're going to put in $250,000. I wonder how much they want my property for. You know what my brother said? Hmm. They want your property, you got gas under it, you got oil under it, you got gold under it. What you got, well, you see my little property there? Controls that whole area. And nobody gets it. I don't care who they are. They do not get it. Now here, because I might pass out, so let's do this. What does Geiger Counter, radioactivity, radioactivity material, and Lincoln Water have to do at 349 South First Street? Which is how far from the Gold's Building? Nine blocks? Somebody explain that to me. I guess you can't, right? But let's get some TIF in there so we can get the EPA back here, right? So we can clean up the crap. Now explain that to me. You have human remains in your landfill? You have human remains at South, North First at the People's City Mission? Human remains as dead bodies. You have how many girls found dead in the water? And you're going to bring people into Lincoln, Nebraska because it's so wonderful? Really? I don't think so. Now, what does Geiger Counter have to do with the water on First and L? Now, First and L is not that far from, what is it? Where's the Gold Building? It's, you go down, you go down that little piddly street, right? And remember, I'm on a turnpike coming from Denver, Colorado. So I don't know about you guys. When I got here in 1996, it was nice little Huckleberry Finn town. I gained 80 pounds, I gained 80 pounds that first six months. It was nothing to do. Of course, the People's City Mission wasn't over there. And make sure you tell these people, hey, where are you putting the drunk tank? You're putting the drunk tank back where it used to be, right? Right? Come on. I keep track of you guys really carefully. That's why I want it like this. I do not Internet. So you do whatever you think you need to do, okay? But the, how much I got?
One minute?
Okay. Oh, one whole minute. Wow. How much damage can I do? Now, if you have 70 police officers, our first responders, why do you guys say Elfer? It's Lincoln Fire and Rescue. Do you know what it takes to be a fireman? Mike Murwick was my uncle. You guys know Mike Murwick? He's dead. Nine mayors. He was building and safety director. Who's your bomb technician? Hmm? Who's your bomb technician? Have you ever watched, what's that show? Towering Inferno? Right? Are you guys old enough? Towering Inferno? Now, you're going to put in all these buildings and no first responders. Wow, that makes a lot of sense, doesn't it? But you guys are leadership. You do what you need to. Because remember, in a business, you just middle management. You're the first one gone. That's how it works in middle management. Hmm? See, now, when you run stuff like it's a business, you worried about coming up here making presentations, right? Right? You can't get any ganja here, but you got meth heads on every corner. Oh, and the prostitutes. Let me tell you about the prostitutes. Thank you much. Come by my house, 349 South First Street. You been there, Dan? Hey, aren't you proud? You allowed it to happen?
Anyone else present that would like to speak on items V, C, D, and E?
Yeah, my name's Richard Hawison, here at 6311 Emmerich Road. And yeah, I want to speak to, to the buy, I may, buyout's not the right word, but the $250,000 contribution, that's less than 10% of the TIF that they're giving to them. And that seems like a cheap, well, again, buyout for not having to put up with affordable housing. Again, evidently, well, they want high-class professionals. And they don't want people that aren't high-earning professionals living in their building. And I try to figure it out. That might be, well, I don't know how they're going, are they going to rent subsidies with this? Is it going to be a rent subsidy, or are they actually going to go out and build apartments somewhere else? If it's a rent subsidy, that'll run out in about 10 years, you know? I tried to figure it out. It's kind of hard, you know, on the figure of base of 2,500 a month, you know? So that's going to run out in 10 years. Anyway, that's my problem with this that appears to be, doesn't appear to, well, they haven't said if they're going to add affordable housing. Again, it just seems like a pretty cheap buyout. Thank you.
Anyone else present that would like to testify on these items? Anyone else? Director Marvin, did you want to close or have any closing remarks? Or Mr. West, anything to close? Okay, very good. Seeing no one else present on these items, Madam Clerk, let's move on.
That concludes Section 5 of our agenda. We shall move on to Section 6, Ordinance's Third Reading and Related Resolution. Item 6A is authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $300 million in Lincoln Electric System revenue and refunding bonds, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckyus. Any further discussion? Councilman McGinnis?
Yes. I have some questions. Maybe if we could get the city councillor or the city attorney up here. I noticed there is no ordinance that we're voting on.
And I think when you say that there is no ordinance, maybe it wasn't, you mean there was not a link?
There was no link. Is there anything that's been posted, what we're voting on? Or?
There is not a link on the agenda online that links to the ordinance. That is, that is correct. I can tell you that the requirement, which I think this is probably where you're going, the requirement is that the agenda items shall be sufficiently descriptive to give the public reasonable notice of the matters to be considered at the meeting. So, so I will tell you that we have done that with the description of, description of the item that is on the agenda.
Okay. On this description, and let me see if I, the one-sentence description that we're going to vote on says, or is it issue of authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $300 million in electric, Lincoln Electric System and revenue, system revenue and refunding bonds. Is this a refunding of bonds, or can this be used for new revenue?
We do have, if I may, Councilman and Mr. Councillor have the chief financial officer here from LES?
I would invite her up as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because these were separated out unintentionally. And so let's, go ahead.
Is there an ordinance that we would be signing that says we are authorizing this board to issue another $300 million of city money, I guess?
There is a bond ordinance, yes.
Hi, Emily Koenig with Lincoln Electric System. I'm the CFO. I was here a week or two ago. I think maybe you weren't here for that meeting to describe what this is. But there was an ordinance that was sent over initially when this was posted to you. I'm not clear on what happens on your side on maybe why you didn't see that. But the gist of the ordinance is just kind of a, to, to make it so that if we want to issue bonds in the next two years, that we can seek approval from the administrative board and don't have to work through the city council process because we already have the overarching authorization to do that. There isn't any specific plan to do that at this time. It's just to allow us to act more quickly to get to market if conditions are favorable, if we need to issue new money or refunding bonds. But the document, I'm not clear on maybe why they haven't seen that.
Did we pass that last ordinance and signed it? So that is in place already? So there's nothing we should be voting on at this point?
So this is the 11th series under the overarching ordinance that was approved in 2001. So we've been doing this every couple of years. And the one that we have currently has expired, the 10th series ordinance, which we didn't issue any bonds under.
Okay.
It expires at the end of December.
Because in the past, you've come to us with the actual issuance.
We've done both. We, we have come when we've needed to issue bonds. We've decided that it made sense to, at the same time as we bring the budget and rates over, to go ahead and seek that authorization so that we, like I mentioned, we can act more quickly. This one, as Chairperson Ward mentioned, got separated, kind of an administrative glitch. It should have come to you for a vote last week, or, excuse me, November 21st.
Typically, these come forward together with the budget. The budget and the bond, and these are not city dollars, obviously.
Right. Revenue bonds, supported by the revenues of LES only.
Yes. So it's an authority measure? This just gives LES the authority, Emily, correct me if I'm wrong, to issue if they need. Last year, you did not need to.
Right, right.
So this way, they don't have to come back to us to issue their bonds for approval.
Yeah. Because a lot of times, we're, especially in a refunding situation, it, we need to act quickly in order to get to market. And this adds another three weeks to the process to get through an approval. So we just do kind of a blanket, so to speak, authorization with you. But any specific issuance that we would do would go to the administrative board for approval still.
Okay. And LES is owned, wholly owned, by the city of Lincoln, correct? Is that right? I'm presuming.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. I didn't know that was an actual question.
Any bonds issued are not backed by the city of Lincoln?
That's right.
Correct.
Only backed by-
Only backed by the LES rate holders.
Revenues. Yep, that's why they're revenue bonds. They're backed only by LES revenues.
Okay.
And not the city.
That changes a little bit. But I still have, okay, let me talk about it.
No, I understand. And we've spoken about this before. And this is the first year, again, for whatever reason, they got separated out. So it's become more of an issue, I think. And with reason. I mean, to talk about it then in past years, so.
And it's really just a convenience measure at this point. If, you know, we can come back when we actually are intending to issue bonds, if that is your preference. This is, this is consistent with our past practice since about 2012, though, is to do it every couple of years.
My only thought was when you did this in 2020, right? October?
Uh, yes, right.
You did come to us with a specific amount and numbers and which bonds you were refunding and bringing forward. If you do refinance, would you extend the terms or do anything like that? Or is it-
Typically, we don't.
Typically, you don't?
Yep.
I just don't see a real big need in the next year of interest rates dropping below 3%.
It is unlikely. Although I will mention that back in 2020, when we issued bonds under the 9th series ordinance, the market, the interest rates were a little unusual. And we were able to issue taxable debt to refinance some of our tax-exempt debt. That was highly unusual and something we had to work really quickly to do to take advantage of that. We had some of the lowest interest rates ever with that issuance. So it's, it's hard to know exactly what, what happened in the next couple of years. But I agree with you, it's probably unlikely that rates are going to, our overall interest rate right now on our bonds is under 2.5%. So it's probably unlikely that we're going to see anything.
These are just, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
These aren't just refunding bonds. You can issue new bonds, up to 300 million.
That's right. For new projects that were approved in our capital budget over there board. Yep.
Without the impact to, to the cities online as well.
It doesn't affect city funds whatsoever.
Correct, right.
These are totally LES funds, so. It's process.
Right.
It's process, yeah. Nonetheless, it's a good question.
Well, I'll, I'll mention it later when we vote.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Emily, for being here. Never know. Thank you, Mr. City, any further questions for our city attorney? Anyone? Or for, okay. All right. Anyone else present that would like to comment on item 6A? Item 6A? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's move on.
I can call the vote now. Washington?
Yes.
Is there further discussion? Oh, wait, I did that wrong. Where are we?
Yeah.
Let's move on. Oh, is it, call the vote. Is there further discussion?
I don't know. It's just I have a hard time letting a non-elected board, you know, put $300 million debt on the city of Lincoln without approval of any elected official at that point. I think it's kind of hard to do. I don't, maybe I'm wrong, but it's just something I've always learned that if it's debt on the city or debt even on a city, wholly-owned city subsidy, that it ought to be brought forward by a public. Now, I know we have an administrative board, but that board's appointed by the mayor and their individual citizens. It's an advisory board. It'd be like saying Planning Commission can go ahead and do bonds and such. Just because I still think it needs to come back to us. And I think they've said in the past that they're fine with that because they don't see anything and still come to us. But just authorizing and allowing somebody to have the $300 million bonding authority without being, I'd say, elected or appointed.
Okay. Other comments? Other comments before we vote? All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-1.
All right.
That concludes our Section 6. We'll now move on to Section 7, Resolutions First Readings, or Items 7A through 7G. Ordinance's First Reading and Related Resolutions is Section 8, Items 8A through 8M. Pending List, Section 9, are Items 9A and 9B.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Beckyus. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
We are adjourned.